Welcome to this week's edition of the Baylor Report. I'm Jane Balo. We're going to continue with our candidate forums. And last week, we had the two candidates, the finalists for the president of the Rochester City Council. And this week, we have the two candidates who are finalists for the Ward Two Alderman position. And they are Michael Wojcicki, the incumbent, and Mark Bransford, the challenger. And Michael Wojcicki, by consensus, is going first.
Well, thank you, Jane, for the invitation, being here. It's always great to be able to reach out to voters through these kinds of means because COVID-19, we're just not going to be able to knock on doors like we maybe once could. And I'm going to keep my comments relatively brief because I think there's great value in answering questions that you have for the community as well. But I would like to encourage folks, if you have questions for me, one thing I've done in my time as city council is I've been incredibly responsive to the community. And if you have any questions for me, know that I strive to put out a clear platform on my website, votewojack.org. And any question that you want to ask me, I'm going to give you a straightforward, honest answer. It's not always the easiest way to get things done, but as I serve the community, I do it with a great deal of integrity, a great deal of honesty, and a great deal of respect for those that I serve. And what that's going to mean is that I'm not always going to tell people what they want to hear. I'm going to be the voice that can actually speak truth to power and will do so without fear of what might come next. I believe that we've seen a lot of progressive change in the community, and it's only accelerated recently. We've had some incredible accomplishments, updating a comprehensive plan that was written before I was born, making really fiscally prudent infrastructure decisions to make sure that we don't sprawl beyond our ability to pay for our resources, and just generally bringing some of the checks and balances and independence into government that we're perhaps missing for too long. Just in the last few years, we've really cleaned up our planning and zoning department, and we're starting to see the benefits of that. We had an absolute disaster at the Mayo Civic Center. It was poorly run, and there was a lot of self-interest and self-dealing going on there. We're able to save the community more than $1 million a year because we were able to speak truth to some of that power. We've had other partner organizations who have let the community down. We're not afraid to make changes. We also recognize that we're incredibly blessed with what we have here in the city of Rochester. There are a lot of places struggling with COVID-19 right now. It's a terrible situation to be in, and none of us asked for a pandemic. But we understand in Rochester, we are blessed to be here. We will weather this as well as anyone, and we will come back strong. And that's a big part of what my focus is for my next term is going to be ensuring that some of the big infrastructure investments and things that we're doing as a community to diversify our tax base and make ourselves stronger. We continue to make those positive decisions so we can weather storms like this. We're going to see now this fall, almost every single property in Rochester is going to see a property tax cut from the city of Rochester. We can only do that by making responsible infrastructure decisions and living within our means. So this is the kind of leadership that, in a time of tremendous change, I hope to continue to help lead that change in a positive direction and definitely not go back to the system that we had before.
All right. Mark Bransford, an opening statement.
Hi. Yeah, my comments are going to be equally brief. My name is Mark Bransford. I was born in Seattle, Washington. I've lived all across the country, big towns, little towns, Miami to Waverly, Iowa. So I've seen a lot of different kinds of cities. And when we moved here about 20 years ago, our first child was born with Down Syndrome. And I can say without a doubt, the special ed in this town is bar none the best ever. We've gotten great care. So this is a wonderful city to live in. My daughter gets a great, tremendous amount of good education. Education is very important to me. The public schools here are bar none, one of the best. Primarily, I'm running because of housing. Housing to me is really, really important. And right now, the cost of housing is way too high. And to give you an example, yesterday, two days ago, I met two people in the social justice movement, Crystal Smith and Jackie Booth, who really have a serious issue with the cost of housing in this town. They took me to the southwest side of the city and showed me some of the living conditions that the poor and low-income people have. And the living conditions there are terrible. And with the way that we have been trying to cram all this high-density housing into the city center has just been bloating the cost of housing because we've made it very expensive to build outside of our city center. Market forces have increased the cost of housing. I have a son. He wants to go to Winona State and be a teacher here. Well, he's not going to be able to afford to live. One of my backyard meet and greets, a couple of the younger people there, moved to Stewartville because they could afford the houses there. We have a really serious issue, and we need to solve it. And we need to actually put money, a line item in the budget, and some staff in place to actually get affordable housing done. That's going to be the primary focus of my term. And we also need to improve relationships between the county and the school board. They're not optimal, and that's hurting us as well. There's a lot of things that need to be fixed infrastructure-wise, and the city and the county aren't really agreeing. And right now, the school board and the city obviously disagreed about the location of a middle school, and that was just needless squabbling. So we need to fix that as well. So in a nutshell, that are two of the big items that I would like to address when I get into the city council.
Okay. Okay, the first question. Why would you like to serve as the second Ward Alderman? And do you have a personal goal or a collective goal?
Are you asking?
Yep.
Oh, it's, well, both. I mean, a collective goal, obviously, as a city council person, I would be serving Ward Two's needs, but also I serve the city as well. And right now, I think there's a great deal of focus on just downtown. And I think some of the community feels like there's a bit of tone deafness, and the housing costs, as I had mentioned earlier, are really high, and that's continuing to increase. So from a city perspective, I'd like to see the cost of housing drop, and I'd like to see it drop quite a bit so that we don't have 30,000 people that commute into Rochester. Selfishly, I have a son who wants to be a teacher. I want him to live nearby me, but I also want him to be able to afford a single-family home and not have to rent. Even people are being priced out of the rentals here. So that's a very, very important thing for me to address.
Okay. Michael Wojcicki.
Well, if the question is, why would I want to do that? I would say that it's a challenge, and I'm not necessarily sure it's entirely something I look forward to doing as much as a civic responsibility. I don't find the position to be particularly fun. I do find it to be incredibly rewarding, though. And in particular, Ward Two, we've seen some really incredible progress. When I was first elected, the area west of 52 on Second Street was pretty downtrodden at that time, and we did some major investments there with the Uptown Project and now Cascade Lake Park. These are huge projects that I've been able to work with neighbors, work with local businesses on, and we've seen a complete transformation. So while there is a downtown focus, we have this other part of the community in Ward Two that's thriving incredibly well. I want to be part of those positive changes, keep focusing on some of the successes that we've already had in terms of the park system and growing Cascade Lake Park, the Uptown District, and just other areas. And I completely concur that affordable housing needs to be one of the community priorities. The county HRA will certainly be the lead agency on that. But in my time in office, we've been blessed to create about 1,200 units of structured affordable housing and additional 7,000 units elsewhere, which is certainly not solving all of our issues, but for these units, the situation would be far worse. We can do better as a community, but I think we do best when we keep our infrastructure costs under control.
Okay. Michael, what is the greatest problem facing Rochester, the city council, or the city itself, right now?
The easy answer would be to say COVID-19 and the challenges we face with that, but that's a universal standard that everyone's struggling with. I would say that it's managing a time of tremendous change. We've gone from a system that I very much disagreed with in the past under a previous administrator and previous mayor to a system that's far more progressive, far more well-thought, inclusive in the community. And I think it's important that these positive steps we take where the entire community can be involved in the decision-making and not just a few power brokers downtown that have traditionally sat on all the boards of commissions. I think we need, as a community, to regain that power for the greater community and not just focus it on a few of the well-known names downtown. That transformation, I think, is going to lead us to a more inclusive community throughout all of our decisions.
All right. Mark Bransford.
Well, again, COVID obviously is an issue, but I agree. I think that that's a universal issue. Some of the big challenges, again, I'm going to harp on this, is housing and affordable housing. We really need to get our housing costs down, but not only for the middle class and the workers. As I mentioned, I had a chance to go and see the living conditions of some of the places where the poor and the low-income folks live, and they're bad. They're really bad. And some of the market forces, due to the way we're developing all of our high-rises, our luxury high-rises for relatively well-to-do, were causing their rents to go up as well. They've doubled in the last 10 years, and they're struggling, and we really need to help them. That's why housing is so important for me, not only for people like Michael and I who can afford a nice house, but everyone, all people, need to have housing. And, you know, when I spoke to Jackie and Crystal, they want a seat at the table. They have a lot of really legitimate concerns about how minorities are being treated and the inequities that they are facing for equality and even getting some of this new housing. They're getting priced out. So I would like to see some of these groups that are underrepresented actually have a seat at the table. We have committees for architecture in town, cute or whatever. I'd like to see a committee of people who have really no voice right now in city government. The other thing I'd really like to see fixed is how we access government. Right now, we can go to meetings. There's an open mic. You have to wade through a lot of web pages. I would like to see some money invested in online apps and e-commerce. I mean, we get push notifications to our phone right now about the score of the Vikings-Packers game, right? Well, we can get notifications about things that are happening right on the horizon. We might know a week beforehand that there's construction coming, that it might affect my business downtown. There are a lot, we might get a notification that, oop, they're going to knock down the Silver Lake Dam and drain Silver Lake. I might want to be civically engaged. A lot of people don't know that's on the books. There's a lot of things like that. We need real transparency, real civic engagement, and I think that with the right tools, we live in the information age, we need the right tools to really engage the citizens.
Mark, the city has taken the hit that many cities in the country have taken because of the pandemic and the need for small businesses to at least survive or thrive. And of course, with the major employer also being affected by the pandemic, what can the Rochester City Council do to help Rochester itself recover from the lost ground that it has suffered because of the pandemic?
That's a great question, and obviously, lowering the property taxes, that's a good start. We definitely need to reduce our PU fees. Energy fees are going up too quickly. We need to freeze a lot of the things that, as an everyday person where I want to go buy groceries, we need to make that a little easier. The other thing, too, is we just need to tighten our belt. You know, we need to look at capital improvement and infrastructure improvement projects that have decent return on investment and really put the kibosh on other things for a little while. We have a backlog in street repair. We need to invest in repairing streets. I think investing in airport expansion is a good idea. Investing in making it easier to interact with the city is a good idea. But we really need to just tighten our belt, and we don't need to spend money on consultants anymore, and we've spent millions on them. I think that DMC needs to step back and look at their original statutory charter and kind of get back on track and just worry about fixing things up downtown for the patients that come to Mayo Clinic. And, you know, we have the heart of the city, which is costing $15 million, which may very well have really only cost $1 to $2 million. We need to look at the cost of things that we're spending or the amount of money that we're spending things on versus what they really cost. And so, like with anybody, we don't buy that extra cellphone, right? We, you know, we don't take that trip during the summer. We look at the budget, and we figure out where we can cut the fat and really just concentrate on the things that we need.
Okay. Michael Wojcicki, what can the city council do to help Rochester recover from the ill effects of the pandemic?
There's, the truth that nobody wants to hear about is that restaurants can't survive on 50% capacity for a certain period of time, and we're going to lose a lot of local businesses as is happening all around the country. What we can do is continue to try and make it easier for people to access businesses, work with flexible permitting, which we've done a lot with our downtown businesses, trying to find new ways for them to interact with customers. And as we have the limited resources, for example, the CARES Act, we're very careful to quickly channel that money into community programs that both help small businesses but also people in the community survive this. There is no perfect answer to a pandemic except be responsible and try to prevent it. And obviously, that ship has sailed at the federal level. So we have our roles. Certainly, the small financial assistance that we can have is important. There's a lot of arbitrary numbers that are being thrown around here, but if you take a look at the city budget, I think we've got a pretty solid budget. We made good adjustments in 2020, able to maintain services. 2021, we also have a pretty smart budget that's going to lead to property tax decreases to most people and fees being frozen. But there is no magic bullet, and ultimately, the role of local government is to create a place where businesses can compete and thrive, understanding that not all of them are necessarily going to compete and thrive in a pandemic.
Michael, many of the cities around us and around the country are defunding the police, and we have not had bad experiences here. But do you support the existing police force, the need for a police force?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's a pretty easy question in Rochester. I mean, the reality is, some of these places, the police forces have gotten pretty out of control. You just saw in Louisville today, I think there was a $12 million settlement because the police murdered a person when they went to the wrong home. Obviously, Minneapolis is full of serious problems. I am so grateful we don't have the kind of rot in the police department that we have in some of these other places. I think that incredibly, our staff is very professional. They perform well. They care deeply about the community. I see them out there engaging with the community. I've had a good relationship with them over the years. I have certainly seen us get rid of bad cops. We're not exempt from that. It does happen here as well. The reality is, is a lot of places, when they talk about defunding, they're really talking about doing the things we're already doing as a smart, progressive community. We're already bringing in social workers from the county to interact with folks when the police aren't the best choice. Recently, we cleared a homeless encampment, and we did that with social workers and not police, and the police were there for backup only if necessary. There was a movement to try and criminalize the process of sitting or laying in the skyways, and that was something that I led the city council opposition to, and we defeated it by a 4-3 vote. So we have our challenges here, but our police force is incredibly responsive to the community. We have commissions in place to try and review policies and be responsive to the community. So I'm grateful for the leadership that we do have in the police department and grateful that we don't have to deal with some of these problems that we're seeing in other communities.
Okay. Mark Bransford, do you support the police?
Well, I support the police because we need the police for protection. And then the question is, is what's going on within individual police departments that are causing these issues? And I've gotten to know Chief Franklin, because I was curious about, you know, this issue from his perspective. And one of the first things he told me is that they were following the Barack Obama's guide to 21st century policing. And he's changed the hiring practices such that they look for honesty, integrity, compassion. And that's really important. And again, I'm going to go back to meeting Crystal Smith and Jackie Booth, who are kind of titans in the social justice movement here. And they love it because that diversity needle is moving upward. And really, the ultimate solution is to have a diverse police force. That's not going to happen overnight, but I would really like to see police force hiring practices include a test for things like that. You can take the lowest member coming out of the police academy, but you can't teach them integrity. You can't teach them compassion. You can teach them how to hold a gun and drive a car, but these are the kinds of traits that we need in our police force. We need people of all color. And when that happens, not if, but when that happens, we will see a significant change in how the police are both seen as people and how they do their job. And that's super, super, super important. That's the ultimate goal in my mind, is let's have a diverse police force. It isn't going to happen overnight.
Okay. The council has taken action on transit programs, and many of these actions were taken before the pandemic and what it would do to the city and its employers and commuting and that sort of thing. When you look at the plans going forward, what is your response to the proposals by DMC with respect to, I know they have it now down to one, what do you call it, transit center on the west side, but what will change for us?
Are you asking?
Yep.
Well, I don't have a crystal ball. I really didn't wish we knew how, at the end of this COVID journey, things will look. I actually think we live in a brave new world. I think a lot of people are going to telecommute. So I don't know how many employees will actually need to park at Cascade Lake and take the transit line downtown. But there's a lot of parking downtown, too. And even if they raise the price of parking stalls up to $200 a month, people are still going to pay that. So to me, it's kind of a conundrum. I actually do see the value in a rapid transit system, say with hybrid buses, cleaner, more energy-efficient, you know, mass transit, getting people in and out of downtown quickly. That makes sense. Where I step back and wonder is, it's going to cost $13 million or $3 million a year in maintenance, three or 13, I can't remember the number. That's a lot of money. And right now, I think we need to just step back and wait a little bit and see. The plans might be perfect. The plans might need adjustment. I also worry a little bit about narrowing of the streets and slowing of the traffic down when you do have a lot of parking downtown.
Okay.
And what you're going to do is queue up buses and queue up cars that are trying to get to that downtown area. And I don't particularly think we have a traffic problem as much as a peak-time problem. And so we just have to be very careful about our return on investment. You know, there's a lot of moving pieces here. It's not necessarily a simple solution, but I think right now, we need to consider a lot of different factors.
Okay. Michael Wojcicki.
I'm going to try and give a pretty straight answer to this and say that I've been a leader in trying to improve transit in the community of Rochester for a long period of time. We have literally thousands of hours of engagement with the community and working and studying how people are going to get downtown, what the growth trends are going to be. And we know transit's not going away. It may look very differently, but we also understand that rapid transit is actually easier in times of pandemics because there's less contact to do things like ticketing. It runs more frequently, so you don't have as much congestion problems. There's a lot of good reasons to do this, and despite the COVID-19 pandemic, it's important to know that the Mayo Clinic, DMC, and the city of Rochester continue to work together to put together this package, which we've now submitted. We're going to find out in February if we get the federal grant, the 50% matching grant to help get this done. This is a big project, not only for the future of transit in the city of Rochester, but also just to help us recover from this pandemic. This is potentially a $120 million project. I know there's been suggestions that we shouldn't go forward with this. All along, I've said, no, we're going to make sure that we're able to do this because it's not just building for the future. It's improving what we have right now. By putting this one central line in, we're actually improving the efficiency of the entire system. That is incredibly important. Access to transportation is a huge challenge for people struggling with the cost of housing. I believe in looking at the numbers with some peers from Mayo Clinic and the school district, we have the opportunity to perhaps create a fair, free system here and operate it for about the same as we're doing right now. We cannot turn our backs on opportunities because there are challenges in front of us. We need only look to our peers around the world, places like Japan, that didn't even shut down for COVID and rely on mass transit effectively, to realize there are smart ways to do that. And we have a lot invested in this. This is a huge opportunity for growth and development within the community, and I'm all in in making these positive changes for the community.
All right. Michael, how would the city council improve its communication with the county board and DMC when you talk about the three elements that are affecting our city?
Well, and I think you have to put in the school district in there as well, and I'm a believer that you lead by example. And one of the things a lot of folks in the community know is, a couple times a month for many, many years, I get together with a county commissioner and a school board person to go through various issues and bounce ideas off of each other. And I think that there is some level of importance that we be available in that. It's also important that we have these communications in public settings because too often, there likes to be, you get a group of, a closed group that likes to meet behind closed doors and figure out what the future of the community is. That's not what I'm about. I don't believe in that kind of communication. I don't believe in inauthentic communication. I also believe that we live in a democracy and a republic so that elected officials can get together and argue and debate these kinds of things in public, and they don't always have to get along, and they don't always have to agree, but you have to be honest with each other. And that's the commitment that I've always made to all of my colleagues, is that I'm very honest about the issues. I do think at the county level, we have a real issue. You know, the previous planning director now has come out and, you know, formally said that there was a, you know, pretty deliberate attempt at gerrymandering county districts in the last redistricting time, and he knows he was the person that did it. So I think a big part of the responsibility of any elected official for the city of Rochester the next couple of years is making sure the county does not, once again, gerrymander districts and disproportionately take representation from people in need because that is a real serious challenge, and that'll hurt those communications. DMC is a little bit of a different role. I know you asked that in your question as well, and I think in particular, we need to have a little bit more communication back and forth with our representatives on there. Mayor Norton has been a huge improvement in terms of communicating back and forth with DMC over what Mayor Brady did, and I'm confident that either one of our next council presidents is going to do a far better job communicating with us as well.
Mark, how would we improve our communication with the county board, the city council, and the DMC?
And I would also throw in the school board in there as well because we've seen some of the issues recently about sort of a blame game going on about what Mr. Munoz was doing and actually didn't do. I actually wanted to understand this issue a little bit better, and I reached out to a county commissioner, and we spoke for about an hour yesterday. So I definitely got a sense of where the city was agreeing and where they were disagreeing. And there's some pretty diametrically opposed things, like the county wanting to make traffic go faster and the city wanting to slow it down, things like that. And I don't think the communication or the collegiality was really there in some instances. Hackles got up, things just, people stopped talking. And really, ultimately, relationship building is about respect, and, you know, we can respectfully disagree, but ultimately, we have to get along and disagree on a particular point, but we can't throw each other under the bus and expect the next problem that comes along to be easily fixed when you're sitting there looking across the table and there's animosity. And that works both ways. I'm not saying that's all the city. I mean, there's a lot of bad communication both ways. And so it just starts with communication. Understand, there's some thorny issues, and we sit on the opposite sides of those. DMC, again, it's really, I think, making sure that we have a really good coherent plan. Again, I think DMC has gotten away a little bit from its statutory charter, and I think they need to kind of get away from some of the things they're doing and refocus their energies and repurpose their energies on providing a good experience for the patients downtown and to kind of maybe get away from some of the things that they're doing right now, like expanding their borders. I've heard good and bad, and I'm not entirely certain where I sit on that, but those are the kinds of things where you kind of have to sit down with DMC leadership and go, well, what are we really doing here? What was your original mission? What are we doing now? These are some of the questions I'd like to have answered.
Okay. We are at five minutes left and brief closing statements, and Mark will start with you.
This has been one of the most terrifying, interesting, and challenging things I've ever done. It's really hard to put yourself out here, really difficult. And, you know, I'll put out a post on Facebook, 10 minutes later, my heart pounding, I'll go and look, what did people say? Were they nice? Were they mean? You know, sometimes you get both. You know, sometimes you get both. Did they like my ideas? Didn't they like my ideas? But, you know, that sort of online interaction and feedback is really, really important. You know, you hear ideas. You have to think about them for a little while. Sometimes they change your mind, and sometimes they don't. But it's, will never be, it's a wonderful experience.